Mr. Ramey. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Love and Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
This meeting is a meeting of the West Joga Local School District Board of Education in public under the provisions of the amended House Bill 197, conducting the West Joga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public remarks during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please use the chatroom function located at the bottom of the page if you would like to be recognized for the public remarks. This is your opportunity to address the board. It is not a time of discussion with the board. You are limited to five minutes per person with a 30-minute total. Would you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations tonight then, starting off with one about student success and wellness by Amy. There's Amy.
Hello.
Hi, Amy.
How are you? Delighted to be presenting tonight with an update on student wellness. Jim has my presentation, but I'll get started. It will be very brief because Karen needs lots of time tonight. So without further ado, as you know, and as we've discussed in the past, that our work on student wellness began long before the grant from the state. We are delighted this year to have two very generous pots of money, so to speak, and funding allocated to us. The first one is from the Ohio Department of Education, and that includes Newberry funding as well that has been combined. And then the second funding source was a grant that we worked collaboratively on with the county and were delighted to receive in the summer. So this funding goes to support numerous programs within the district, but we're going to highlight the ones that have the greatest impact right now and for which the funding is covering with the hope of sustaining a lot of these services. So the first stipulation from the Ohio Department of Education is that the funding that they provide must be done in conjunction and partnership with an ESC. So we are working with the Giaga County ESC on numerous initiatives that will become more apparent in a later slide. So that accounts for some of the funding. We also have, we had a part-time social worker. We increased her to full-time this year. And we have a Ravenwood therapeutic behavior support person. Sarah Del Monte is a West G graduate. We've discussed her before, and she and Donna Fisher, our social worker, have become heavily involved in the day-to-day activities of the building. Their primary focus has been the middle and high school for a lot of different reasons that I'm sure you understand, and yet they have maintained a presence at the K-2 and 3-5 buildings as well. Lastly, when we looked at our needs and surveyed, well, not surveyed, but really gathered garnered data from students, staff, and parents last year, we realized that we were devoid of a social-emotional learning curriculum at the elementary and secondary levels. So Second Step is an evidence-based curriculum, and it is well-regarded nationally, and it requires 30 minutes per week of a teacher or a school counselor or whomever delivers it. So we are doing that in our kindergarten through eighth grades. This is just a repeat of the action plan that we shared with you last year. We continue to add to it, but again, when interviews were conducted and staff gave input, these were some of the buckets where we put our priorities. Certainly, some of the things that really came out of those interviews were the need for more parent engagement, addressing trauma, resilience, and how that looks in the classroom, focusing on helping students with anxiety and coping, time management, and social media, et cetera. So this is where a lot of the services that we've referenced earlier are provided. K-12, we have our district's social worker and the Ravenwood therapeutic behavior support person. We have provided QPR training for all staff. We need to do it again this year. We did it last year in the spring. It's called Question, Persuade, and Refer, and that was specific training in how to talk to an individual in crisis, and more specifically in terms of mental health and whether or not that person was at risk of taking their own life. We've also implemented a mini-model of a county team within our buildings where every week we meet with staff from each school, and it's one school each week, to be specific, where we meet and we problem-solve some tricky student cases where the answer may not be so apparent, and maybe there's some need for additional supports and some creativity around how we help that particular family. At the high school in particular, we have implemented youth-led prevention, which is a group that is led by Chelsea Talte and focuses on tolerance, student voice, and problem-solving, some, any concerns that come up at the high school. We also have restorative practices and circles around tolerance and how we can build community within that building. K through 8, again, I referenced Second Step. At the middle school, there is a connections classroom, which not only has implemented Second Step, but also a variety of other wellness initiatives around students in collaboration with the county. Last week, as part of a new parent education series, well, two weeks ago, we initiated a K-5 virtual parent support group. Last week's parent education session was focused on the high school in particular in terms of coping with student loss and preventative measures and talking points for families with their own students. And then this week's will be on technology, so that's for another board update. And lastly, I just wanted to leave you with some initiatives that we are currently working on, and Jim, that would be the last slide, where we are at Lindsay looking at Girls on the Run, which is a program focused on activity and action for girls, and we want to be able to provide scholarships as that is a fairly costly program in which to participate. At the high school, we have a number of students who are at risk of not graduating on time, so we are looking at, and Jim has helped with this, in terms of incentives and that sort of thing. We want to provide academic tutoring as well as some life school coaching and that sort of thing to those students. And lastly, it's not on the slide, but obviously, we want to make sure that through our various initiatives that we embed some very strong leadership skills, both with our staff and with our students, so that we have some systems internally where we're taking care of each other and working toward much improved social-emotional health in a very challenging time period.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Anybody have any questions for Amy?
Yeah, when you say Girls on the Run is an extensive program, Amy, what's the expense?
It's $165 approximately per student. It's a, it will be coached by parents. I think that they have secured the Metzenbaum Center to get started in March. Megan Bellin has been very involved in initiating that, but a great program for involvement and one we're hoping to sustain over time. We've seen other communities really embrace it in terms of women's leadership and that sort of thing.
How many girls are we talking about?
Well, that's where we have to work on it because of distancing. Each session may be limited to 10 to 12 participants because of COVID. So that's where we're hoping to run more than one session so that we can include as many girls as we can from Lindsay.
Have they, have they approached the Ed Foundation for any funding for that?
No, but that's a great idea, Kathy.
Yeah.
High sense of presentation.
Kathy, I have some experience with Girls on the Run with Ava, and it's a great, great program.
Yeah.
I think it could be a little bit difficult with social distancing, but again, it did teach a lot of leadership skills, and I thought it was an awesome program. So good for you, Amy. I think that'd be a nice addition to our school.
You may want to contact Kice right away, Amy, because we've got a meeting on Wednesday night, and I don't think that there have been any proposals for this.
You know what? This is all because of Megan Bellin, so I will, while you're meeting, Megan and I will get on it, so that is a super idea.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
My sister-in-law is ED of the chapter in Boise. It's, it's a wonderful program.
Yeah.
Yeah. Amy, I have two questions. One is, is absorbing Newberry and is COVID pandemic crisis, are they impacting what you're doing at all?
The Newberry community?
Well, we now have Newberry students, and they have needs and so on.
I think, Ben, what I can honestly say to you is that our needs span both the West Giaga School District and Newberry as one, as truly that umbrella, and it spans every sort of situation you can imagine. So we, and then, and what I will say is, we have been humbled by the crisis services that have been available to us. Their expertise and their management of, and assistance has been unparalleled. The crisis team that arrives when there's, when something happens like losing a student is comprised of so many different organizations through Giaga County. I have to say, it's stellar. Nobody ever wants to, to need that, but there, we have had needs across the board, so I think we're, we've been in good hands and, and well.
Yeah, that's really encouraging. The other question I had is, when the schools were grade leveled, one of the hopes that I had, I think was shared by a lot of people, is that we'd develop areas of expertise in the buildings. And are you seeing any of that developing? You know, because those grade levels are so different, you know, K to 2 and 3 to 5 are very different times in a child's development. So are you seeing any expertise starting to develop, or is there anything we can do to enhance that?
Oh, my gosh, absolutely, and I think Nancy would second that. We are seeing, whether it comes to behavioral supports or curriculum expertise, we're seeing some peer-to-peer mentoring emerging, so absolutely, that is happening, and we are thrilled. And I know the principals would also chime in for sure. Yep.
Great, so we're seeing some real benefits for the kids.
Oh, my gosh. Yes. Yeah, no question. Thank you. Yes, yes, not an easy task, but I think our children will benefit, and, and that was the whole goal, so.
Yeah, thanks. That was.
Just to add to that, Ben, that it's, it's even more challenging this year. I mean, while we, while we see gains, keep in mind, our onsite educational program is not what it typically is, because normally, the, the student groups we have, et cetera, are now curtailed by social distancing. So, so our classrooms, for those who are seeing them for the first time, they look a little more sterile and a little more stoic than they, they normally look.
Sure.
It's not business as usual in the building, so.
What are we doing about the kids online? I mean, is there, is, is there, I mean, I'm sure there is, but like, how are kids identified? How are they reached when they need services if they're online? Or is that not happening as much online? Is there a different profile of the kids online? I'm just curious about that.
No, I would say the teachers have done a beautiful job of referring students for extra assistance. Parents have reached out. I think that's the value of the trusting relationships. And I think too, when you speak about Newberry, we've brought on teachers with an excellent background in literacy. Newberry had two literacy coaches, and so we're fortunate to have their expertise onboard. When we talk about grade level in K-2 and 3-5, it's, it's been incredible. So, no, I, we, we're, and, and of course, it is difficult. The challenges are there by being virtual, but I think we've, we've appreciated all the work that our teachers are doing, and our parent professionals, and our principals, not to mention the parents.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, I don't want to take too much time. I know Karen's going to regale us with stories of line item 46 and other exciting things, so I don't want to hone in her.
Everybody, okay.
Glenn Quigley's trying to get on. I think he may be in the, in the waiting room. Can anybody let him in? Is he in there?
Jim, can you see him?
I am, I don't have anybody in the waiting room.
Nothing in there?
No.
Okay, I'll tell him. He's texting me, trying to tell me, trying to get in, so I apologize for interrupting, but it's important that he gets on here, too.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the much-heralded, long-awaited.
I think I'm gonna go, go enter the room for a while.
Well, everybody's excited to hear about the five-year forecast, but.
You can give us the, the short version, right, Karen?
I will, yes.
Which is the same as the long version, I'm sure. But we'll take the short one.
Okay. Let's let Karen get started.
Yes, we're gonna do two things at one time this time. We're gonna talk about the five-year forecast, we're gonna talk about the new, well, proposed funding for schools, in-house bill 305. So we're gonna put those two things together in two presentations. We're gonna put them together into one. So Jim, you'll go to the next slide. You have a copy of the five-year forecast in detail, so we're going to just do the overview for the board, and if you have any questions, certainly, please feel to, you know, feel free to ask those questions, and I will get back to you if I can't answer them, but hopefully I can do that tonight. The forecast overview, this is the first year we're gonna have Newberry totally encompassed into our forecast. Again, we do a November forecast that predicts what we're gonna do for the next five years, and then in May, we do an update. So this is our big forecast. So we've included all of Newberry and the territory transfer, things that have come through, revenues and expenses. The property tax collections, we had anticipated that those property tax collections due to COVID would approximate 95%. Those collections came in for the first, second half of 20, of the tax year 2019, came in at 98%. So we are very happy to see that. The 95% was the prediction from the county, so West Giaga's doing better than expected. The county's next triennial revaluation will be for this year, for 2020, so we'll have anticipated increase in property values. What I've heard from the county, they haven't released the report, but we are looking at anywhere from 5 to 10%, depending on where, what areas you're in, probably we'll, we'll be looking around at a 7% increase in property values. Now, that doesn't always correlate to each location, but that's kind of where we're, where we're seeing kind of the ranges. We did have state budget cuts this year in 2020, and we also had those, they went ahead and cut our budget in 2021. We'll talk a little bit more about the dollar amounts later on. The forecast is entering a period of very little revenue growth. We've seen the growth of revenue due to bringing on Newberry, but at this point after that, we're going to see kind of a stabilized growth, and that's kind of what we've seen throughout our years before. We've seen very little growth in, in property tax revenues. We don't have any levies on the ballot, so that's why we see a kind of a flattening of that revenue line. However, at the end of 2025, we will have a positive cash balance, which is good news for the district. It's a tribute to, the administrators are on this webinar, this meeting today that, that we have really worked hard to continue to spend, you know, to spend the amount of money that we have, but for our needs, but also keeping in mind that we are not, we have limited revenue growth going forward. This graphic here will predict, give you a kind of a snapshot of what we're looking at. If you look at the blue line, that is our revenues beginning in 2018. That's the actual, and you see that kind of flat. You see that peak going up in 2021. That would be the Newberry territory transfer and the cash transfer coming over from Newberry, and that was about $4 million. Then we see that decline as we go into 2022, and then flatline, and that is indicative of what we've seen. So you kind of see it in 18, 19, and 20, then you see the peak, and then you see it going forward 2020, 2022 to 2025. We also see that we had very little growth in expenditures in years 18 through 20. We see the spike go as up. That's when we're adding the Newberry expenses of all the wages and salaries, plus the additional purchase services and supplies and all the things that we've got added on. And then we see a slight increase as we go along through 2025.
Hey, Karen, is that with current staffing levels and everything that we have going on today?
When you look at the difference, you see a kind of a flattening between 2021 and 2022. We had a ramp-up of COVID staffing levels due to social distancing, you know, any type of cleaning, sanitizing, things that we have there, how our bus routes are done, because we did have to add time to our bus route. So what we see is 2022 going back to a, what a normal school year, I don't know that we've had one yet, but what a typical school year would be. So you see that flatten out, and so we'll have some staff reductions or some staff time reductions. So instead of a bus driver having seven hours, they'll go back to a six-hour day, so that you're seeing that flat line between 21 and 22. The neon green is our cash balance, so you see that kind of reaching up a little bit, peaking in 21, and then start to go down in 2025. We'll start with that, and we'll end the five-year forecast around $12 million. The May forecast had us ending around $11.5 million, so we're a little bit better than our May forecast. We just start with the general fund revenues. This is about $32 million. This doesn't include the cash transfer. This is our standard year-to-year general fund revenue. You'll notice that we have local sources of 77.7%. That's made up of our real estate taxes, and that's about $23 million, plus the additional of other local, and that's about $1.8 million. That has our open enrollment included in there. Our state foundation, plus the other state funding, is about 23%. The state foundation is the $4.1 million that we have. That's what we talk about when we talk about state foundation payments. And then the other state, which is that lime green, that is the homestead and rollback. Some of the assumptions that we have related to operating revenues that are in the five-year forecast is that tax collections are gonna be about 98% instead of 95% predicted by the county auditor. We've had very good collections. Now, we may have some things, if this does persist, if we do have businesses that are going to fail, we may have a Class II property tax delinquency increase. We're seeing some of that generally in the state, and we're seeing some of that pressure on our small businesses here in Giaga County. The new state budget, we had, obviously, we had cuts in 2020 and 2021. However, we're anticipating that those go back to a pre-2019 level. So the 2020 cut was $271,142. We also had the exact same cut for 2021 for a combined reduction in state funding of $542,000.
Karen, when you say 542, that's not over the two years? That is over two years?
That's over a two-year period. So we have about $272,000 per year. Now, Newberry and West Giaga are on the funding guarantee. These amounts are guaranteed under 3311 for three years because of the territory transfer, and I sent you an email, or I sent you an update on that, on how the territory transfer's gonna be treated if we do move forward with House Bill 305. Amy talked about the restricted student wellness funding. This was where we saw an increase coming from the state. However, that's not in the general fund money. That's in a restricted fund. That's why she did her presentation tonight to talk about what, how we're gonna spend that money, because there are significant restrictions on how we use that money and who we have to partnership with. So she has about $166,000 there. Currently, there are no emergency levies due in this forecast period. If you recall, in the last two renewals, we had a 10-year renewal in place, so they're not, there is no emergency levies that we have to renew during this forecast period. Another graphic here is just to show how much of a local, we have local revenue burden we have versus a state burden. And when we look at this, you see the red, we see the peak coming up again in 2021. That's the adding of Newberry, and then we see it kind of flattening out over the next four years. State funding, then see a peak in 21, and then we see that flat line going from 2022 to 2025. And you can see that we do have a significant, our taxpayers bear the burden of our revenue through taxes, through our property taxes, and so that's why we're very careful on how we're spending our money.
Is that pretty standard, Karen, for, for most of the districts around us and?
For around, yeah, for around here, we, we see that, that type of split. I mean, if you look at Kenstone, you look at Shugren, we look at, you see Shartan have a little bit more, they'll get a little bit more in state funding, but for the most part, we, this is where we consider wealthy districts, you see this type of split, and that's one of the reasons that we're looking, that the state is looking at how they're gonna fund schools going forward. This creates the derelict problem of where there's an over-reliance on local property taxes.
Yeah, I just, I just wish there were more, more of a way that we could let our, our community know how, how different we are from, from a lot of other, other districts. I mean, we're, we're similar to others surrounding us, and we're all facing that same thing, but I know we, we've been dealing with this for a long time, and it's just unequal that we're.
So Karen, Karen, if you were to.
Others.
Sorry, Kathy.
Yeah, that's okay. Go ahead.
Karen, if you were to do this plot for, for instance, I'm just gonna say the city of Cleveland, because I don't know what other one to pick on, would it basically be flipped the other way, that where we've got red, they've got orange, and where we've got orange, they've got red?
Yeah, they would have a significant, that yellow bar would come much closer to the red bar as far as the height, so that they have addition, far more, you know, state funding than we do. It's based on local property values. Now, they have a huge commercial value, so they are able to tax businesses versus local residents. We have very little commercial property, so our residents are taking on that burden.
I, that's kind of what I was getting at, Bill, maybe, and I don't think Cleveland is, is a good one for us to compare to, but, but maybe finding another school system that is, is, or some other school systems that are, that are similar to ours, but in other parts of the state or whatever, and their, their bars are exactly the opposite of ours, just to, we, we need to do more, I think, to, with this and with the fact that we're, I mean, as far as we're saving people money, which we've tried to do for years, the, with the, you know, are not, not going to the Auburn Career Center and being automatically charged for that. I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of work to be done in trying to, to get the public to understand what we're doing.
And I think that, you know, we, you know, we get confused sometimes when we talk about an emergency levy coming out and doing the renewals. The fact that we haven't had any new levies on the ballot that are generating new dollars, that's what we, that message across to our community as well.
Bless you.
Excuse me. Sorry. This looks at our estimated general fund expenditures for 2021. Again, we're gonna spend about 23, $33 million next year. This adds the Newberry expenditures in there for the first year. Our wages and benefits represent about 74%, and that's in line with other districts. I mean, you see that balance in there. So wages about 53%, and our benefits about 21%. The next largest component is the purchase services. This is where we are paying tuition payments. This is where we're paying out open enrollment. These are some high-dollar amounts, particularly for our services for special ed, because we do participate in a consortium where we do pay those expenditures to the ESC.
Why is capital zero? Is it because just of categories?
Cause I mean, we have capital expenditures. What does it mean in this case?
When you look at the pie chart, because capital is so small, because we do have, if you recall, we have that one mil permanent improvement levy that y'all were able to set aside. That's where we spend a lot of our capital and put it into the permanent improvement fund. So we don't spend as much. So if you look at for capital, we usually spend a, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for about technology. But all bus purchases and all that are out of that other fund, that 003 account. And then we have any type of large expenditures for the buildings, they also come out of that account as well. So when we look at this, if you were to look at wages, we spend 17.4 million dollars in annual wages. So if we spend a hundred thousand in capital, that's why capital goes to zero. Cause it just doesn't get enough decimal points there. Our benefits are around $6.8 million for next year and our purchase services are $7.3 million. So that's the largest portion of ours.
Maybe just to emphasize that a bit more, this is general fund expenditures.
These are general.
As opposed to other expenditures Ben?
Yeah, thanks Bill. That's right. Yeah. Appreciate that.
And when we look at the 003 accounts, the capital, the permanent improvement, we, again, we still have some of that money left over from the roof project. We have about $900,000 still left in that. And then we have the remaining portion of a one mil that goes into the regular permanent improvement fund. He expenditure assumptions for the forecast. Again, everything trends a little higher because of the Newberry territory transfer. We've added almost 40 staff into our, onto our roles. Our salary base increase this year was 2%. We're estimating 1.5% from 2022 to 2025 with step increases. The average total with the step increase in 2021 was about three and a half. And then total average is about 3%. So that's what we're looking at going forward throughout the forecast. Now that could change with, you know, obviously with negotiations. The, we have contracts that we have in place with our bargaining unit members and those will expire this year. Our medical and dental premiums are assumed to be about a 3% increase this year, 4.3 for 22 and 8% going forward. And the reason that difference is because we had a 0% increase in medical expenses, medical insurance this year. However, we have a, a number of people that are moving or insurance rolls. And then that 4.3 is kind of a difference between 0 and 8% and kind of splitting it. Because we do start our entrance on January instead of the fiscal year on July 1st. Someone had a question. Purchase services are projected to be about 6.1% increase this year and then average about 2 and 2.3 going forward. Supplies are assuming to grow 2.6 after a 2021 spike. And that spike is related to a lot of our COVID expenditures that we have in place for cleaning and sanitizing this year. Now we did have the use of federal funds through ESSA, the ESSAR grants and the CRF grants that anticipated about a little over $220,000. Again, Ben, our capital is anticipated beyond plan projects. They did, they may increase sharply if we don't have the disposition of the Newberry facilities. All the current operating costs related to the Newberry facilities have been included into this forecast until the disposal of those, of those properties. Now we have not included any type of disposition cost associated in here because it's too premature to have those in place. We don't know what's going to happen with the property. So none of those have been included in our assumptions.
Karen, have you just then included in terms of Newberry, the cost of carrying those buildings until the end of the forecast? Or how, how did you?
No, we just do flatlined them and included those into the forecast.
What, what does that mean? Cause it's a five year forecast. Does it include carrying the buildings for four years or just carrying them for a year?
It includes them, but carrying it for the forecast, for the full.
Yeah, thanks.
When we look at the, this is just a graphic to just show you, you know, the majority of our expenditures will be in wages. And again, those were 7.4 million dollars. Benefits are a little lower, a little under 7 million and purchase services around 7 million as well. And so that's really where we see the bulk of our growth in expenditures. Special education and school choice programs drive those increases in purchase services. When we look at those school choice programs, we're talking about community schools. We're talking about open enrollment out. We did have a significant increase in open enrollment out because a number of Newberry students are enrolled in other districts. That was about $600,000 whereas before we had about a hundred thousand dollars. So that increased substantially for us. We do have a number of programming from John Peterson Autism Scholarships. Those are also included in there as well. Our ending cash balance, you see the green. So what we look at is under the GFOA, they recommend about a 60 day cash balance to keep on task. Now they're relooking at that recommendation because of COVID to maybe to move that to a four month, you know, 120 day cash balance before you go out and seek for new funds. So when we see 2021, the green line is going to be our cash balance again. We'll end the year a little bit over $20 million. And then we'll, and that's particularly with the spike of the $4 million cash transfer from Newberry. We see the yellow is going to be the 60 day mark. So we far exceed that. Again, we want to include any unencumbered balances that we have, and that's the dark blue. So you see the green is the cash balance and then the unencumbered balance is the blue. Cause we do have some encumbrances that we have at the end of the year. Our estimate for the end of 2025 will be around $12 million as we've talked about. Two days.
The 60 day cash balance would then mean that you could pay the salaries for those 60 days plus whatever else there is?
Correct. So we can make two months if we didn't have anything. So we look at this true day cash balance. This shows how many days the district could operate without any future revenues. If we were to just stop receiving any money. So when we look at that for 2021, we could operate 220 days. Get down to 2025, it's down to 122 days. So that's typical of what we've been seeing as we start to spend more than what we're bringing in. That's a four month balance. I think that's a very healthy balance for us at this point. It does get us to a point where we have a little bit of flexibility on what we're doing to change in programming. It gives us a little bit of breathing room on how we want to deal with capital planning. So I think that those are some things that really have given us a few opportunities as we go for the next five years and kind of try to work with what we want to do with the district. So let's go, the next slide Jim. What things do we want to look forward in the next five years? What are we going to be focused on? We'll start, look, begin, beginning to use our reserves in 2021, meaning that we're going to spend more than what we bring in. And that's typical of a cycle for school districts. We've been very fortunate through a lot of cost reductions and some additional revenue that we've been able to keep the, our expenditures under those revenues. The forecast also indicates that state funding would be flat through 2025. We also want to make sure that we're renewing any levies as they come due because that will be critical to preparing for a new levy. Perhaps in the next four to five years. So even though we may have four months worth of cash, we may not want to wait to do a levy until 2025 because the levy would be a higher amount unless we did it earlier. And we can ask the residents to pass a levy that's going to be much smaller. That's one of the things we have to kind of balance with what our future needs will be as well. The things we'll be focused on, we'll closely monitor that revenue versus expenses going forward. We monitor the local tax collection rates for any type of economic stress that we have due to really kind of this COVID. If we do shut down again, that's going to obviously create a great deal of economic stress on our businesses here. They may not make it, therefore they don't pay their taxes. We want to manage the expenditure and budget lines and look at that as a pre COVID 19 staffing levels. That's something that Anne and I were talking about earlier was we're kind of net. We had to staff up some of those areas because of social distancing. And now we need to look at future programming needs going forward and whether or not we'll need to make some staffing adjustments there.
Karen, have you looked at how much of that would be just simply handled by attrition or do you have any?
Right now we've had a couple of retirements that are, that will be, help us do that. So I'm hoping that we'll, you know, we never know what's in someone's mind, whether they're thinking of retirement. But we have had a couple of people that have reached out and are looking at retirement this year, which will help us a great deal. Our future state funding is based upon, again, it's flat. However, we do have something going on with the state legislation regarding House Bill 305 and a new funding formula. And we're going to talk about that in just a few minutes. But we do have to monitor that and what the impact's going to be. I've sent out a lot of information on that. Hopefully you've received that. Things going forward, the disposal of the Newberry properties. And what I mean disposal is not disposing, it's, it's just that, that's how the term used to, how we're going to get them off our books on to someone else's. And then the revision of the master facility plan during the forecast period for capital planning. We need, we've kind of put it on pause for a variety of reasons. But we need to revisit that plan to determine what kind of capital planning we need. And as Mark will tell me that we need to make some decisions regarding some major repairs and maintenance items that we need to have in place for some of our buildings.
Karen, I would suggest that maybe you and the finance committee, take a look at when the levies, renewal levies are coming up and when it might make sense for a new money levy. And get back to us and, I mean, it doesn't have to be next month, obviously. But we probably should be looking at that carefully this spring, just so we get ahead of it. Rather than it sneaking up on us like it sometimes does.
Right. And those levies are coming due and the renewals are 2026 and 2029. We did post those out 10 years, but there are some, you could, you know, do some substitute levies. If you wanted to do, take advantage of some things there on those. So there's some things that we could do from a financing standpoint. But it really kind of talks about, you know, how we want to manage these revenues and expenses going forward. So if we can talk a little bit about House Bill 305 and what the impact's going to be on the district. We are asking, there is a resolution on the, on the agenda tonight to talk about supporting House Bill 305. This is something that the alliance has asked us to, to look at and perhaps get our board to sign on. And then send that to our legislation, legislators very quickly. Cause it's, we have a quick turnaround. The Jim, next slide. The Fair School Funding Plan is, is very similar to the, or really is the Cup Patterson Funding Plan that we discussed in April 2019. There are three components of that. It's the base cost. This is what it takes to educate a child in our, in a, in a school district. Add-ons that will be included in there and then how we would distribute tho- that, those funds. There are, and why do we have to do this? Why are we looking at this school funding plan? But go back to what Kathy was talking about is the derelict decision in that we rely too heavily on real estate taxes. And that the state has not really come up with a funding, an adequate funding model to, to take care of our kids. So there are 610 districts in the state of Ohio and over 500 of them were on the cap or the guarantee. Meaning that the funding, current funding model that we have in place is broken because we're having to guarantee their funding. So it doesn't have a reduction from the prior year. The base cost, if we look at this, the base cost is made up in a lot of different components. But it really talks about what does it cost us to educate each child? And what does each district need to operate? So there's a lot of inclusiveness. So we, there was a lot of hands-on, a lot of superintendents involved in this, a lot of treasures involved in this and a lot of really people that work with numbers that are involved in this part. And we hate to talk about that when you're talking about kids, but we're talking about funding, not what we're doing in the classroom, but what we're funding. And so when we look at this, 60% of this new formula would be based on direct classroom instruction. And then 15% would be instructional and support. Then school leadership and operation would be another 20 and then direct district leadership and accountability would be a number five. So most of this is really focused on your student and in the classroom. It's, it's base cost is also a research based model. They did a lot of research associated with this. They consider the whole student, we, you see kind of the components of this, you'll see what we're talking about. And it really talks about really what does it take to run an, a school? Are we completely funding that? So if you go to the next slide. We saw this kind of a, as a component. So what they're looking at is taking the classroom instruction, kind of deciding how many students we have per FTE and then funding how many students that would take. Going in direct instruction that we'd have. So if you had a kindergartner, 20 kids in a classroom, you have 57, you get 2.9 teachers. Obviously you can't have 2.9 teachers, but that's kind of the model that they're looking at. And then they've added here, you see that's the base aid for teachers. And they've added direct instruction for specials, which would be art, music and PE. Substitute teachers, professional development that has to be paid for. Those items are also included in this model. Next slide. We're talking about instructional and student supports. This is where we get into some of the things that they don't fund. Co-curriculars and our, in academic co-curriculars, athletic directors, the high school guidance council support. I mean, these are all things that we need to do to work with kids, to keep them healthy, to keep them well, cool and safety. Those things are not added currently. Supplies and academic content, media, social, emotional. This is where the governor has in the past, given us that additional money through the 467 money that Amy's talking about. Here you see a, a very large commitment to the social, emotional security of, of our students there. It would also look at instructional technology. We've added, we pay all the Chromebooks, all that. Not everybody has those hotspots, all those things. So we're adding that instructional technology. It's so critical for those students nowadays and we've never really funded that. So we're looking at what's an amount per student. School operations would be the building leadership. That would be our principal, operations support. And then the leadership support, that would be the staff that we have supporting that principal. Next slide Jim. And then the district leadership, we need one superintendent, one treasurer. That's all you need. That's all you're going to get. We couldn't handle anymore, I'm sure. And then we'd have additional, this would be our administrative staff, the fiscal staff and our EMIS support. It actually supports an EMIS coordinator, which is unusual. We've never had that before, but again, this is one of the things that's become, we've, as we, as we know, has become very important to us and, and making sure that we accurately report because everything's going to be based on a per pupil basis. So we need to make sure that we have a very good understanding of those people, pupils that are in our district or those that are going outside our district. Next slide. In addition to those things and the base cost, we're going to have some add-ons. And we're going to talk about the special ed programming. Those things will be added on. And again, they're looking at an updated cost study. They don't have the numbers now. They're going to have to look at this. They want to fund it at a hundred percent and use a multiplier on the base cost. They want to add money for gifted English learners, our transportation. We don't get any money for our transportation now, other than about for bus purchases. They want to look at that and look at bus purchases. Well, we would rotate our, our fleet every 10 years. And for property preschool, those things, we already get money from, but they want to look at that and make sure it's the right amount in what they're funding. And again, this is a six year phase in plan. When we looked at this in April, it was like a one and done and we're getting there, we're rushing ahead. The new Senate bill and the House bill have, will meet together. They're looking at a six year phasing of this plan because they can't do it all in one year. And again, this is in a lame duck session as well, which is also going to be very challenging for us. Last slide. This is the distribution. Currently you saw that distribution. We saw state funding. We saw, you know, the yellow line, we saw the big red line that was there. They're looking at distributing this a little bit differently. 60% based on property taxes, 40% based on general income. So that our local share would be about 2.25% of what we call local capacity. And if you'll go to the last slide Jim, you'll see, I don't know if that's the last slide. Oh yes, last one. You'll see here what we're talking about. So right now we would be at a 2.4% per pupil local capacity. We want to do at least 2.25. We would have an increase in funding. So we would see in our funding about a $454,000 increase in our state funding. Again, that's over a six year period. It'll take six years to get to this. So we may not see all of it in one year, but at the end of six years, they would hope that we would, our state funding would be increased about 450,000. Now we would be affected certainly by a decrease of enrollment because this is a per pupil basis, a per pupil form. per pupil basis, a per pupil formula. So we want to be careful with that. It does also take out all the money, the tuition stuff. So all the John Petersons would no longer be included. All the autism scholarships would be included, open enrollment would be included. So those things will be taken out of this state funding. So this is really payment for students who are educated in West Giaga's district. One thing on this that we did note, the Newberry, as part of the territorial transfer, we have a three-year guarantee on this, on the state funding. It wasn't included in the simulation, but they're going to wait and see how this works out and then determine, you know, if there is an impact on us. If we were to have it totally in there, it'd be another hundred and something thousand dollars added to the $454,000. But, all right, timeline, last thing, questions and timeline. Again, they're trying to have this in place through a lame duck session. They want to, they're having testimony, they've already started their testimony in the House, they're looking at testimony in the Senate. Then to come back and have a joint committee, kind of get it out of committee on, by December 10th and then have a vote by December 15th. So those are very aggressive timelines. So they're looking again to have the board, if they would be so inclined to support this new funding model and to send that off to our representatives. Questions, concerns?
Is this six-year? Am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. Is, is, six years guaranteed that, that this would continue for six years? Got to be changed for the future? Yes.
They have, because you have to balance the budget in Ohio every year. And as we saw in 2020 and 2021, we are one of the largest line items of the state's budget. So if they can't, if they have budget pressures, we're going to see that happen. But their goal is to put this, and they can't, as a legislator, you can't put laws in place that, you know, someone else can't change. You can't force them to do something. Okay?
Any other questions for Karen? Okay, thank you. So we've got a motion later on to approve the five-year forecast, correct?
Yes, we do, sir.
Yeah, okay. So we will move on now to public remarks. I don't see that anybody has signed up in the chat room.
I do not either.
Okay, so then we will move on to routine items. Karen, I think it's back to you.
Resolution 367 to approve routine matters of the West Giaga Local Board of Education to include the October financial statements, the minutes, and our substitute list.
Don't move.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski.
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Financial resolutions, 368 to approve the five-year forecast update.
So moved.
Second.
Any more questions for Karen?
Well, I want to say thank you to the Finance Committee because they had to sit through this twice and they did, we did work on the assumptions prior to that. So they've been working on this for a while and listening to me, so I appreciate it both from Mr. Ramey and Mr. Thorson.
Well presented, Karen, very understandable, thank you.
Yeah.
You kept the words out of my mouth, Kathy. Exactly what I wanted to tell Karen. Very.
And you have my stamp of approval on the graphs.
I did. More graphs. We, we did more pictures.
I know Kathy would understand that joke.
Yes, totally.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Katsowski.
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 369 to allow the treasurer CFO to open and maintain bank accounts with Huntington National Bank.
So moved.
So moved, second.
This is due to a name change, so we're having to redo the signature cards.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 370 to approve warrants for the October 2020.
Don't move.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution 371 to approve student activity statements of purpose and proposed budgets for the 2021 school year for the high school key club and the middle school yearbook.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 372 to approve the Ohio deferred compensation adoption agreement, exhibit B for the Roth 457 option.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? You want to comment briefly on this, Karen?
What? Yes. So right now, we have a deferred compensation option through the 457. And so that allows us, you as an employee, to transfer money similar to a 401K. So it's not taxable until you retire and take that money out. The Roth option is something that we had a, that they're now offering brand new. And so it allows a employee to put in after-tax dollars and then have those invested. And then when they pull them out in retirement, they're tax-free. So it just flips it a little bit. So we've had a couple of people that have been interested in that, that are wanting to take advantage of that. And we had to approve this as part of our 457 plan.
When you say new, you mean new to us, right?
New to us.
It's been around for, what, 15 years?
Absolutely. It's very similar to the Roth IRA, but we've never had that option with our 457 plan. So we have two plans. We have a 403B plan and we have a 457 plan. And so this was just another option that is, you know, for our employees.
Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 373 to approve in lieu of transportation payments for the 2021 school year.
Don't move.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Ramey? Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Finally, it's somebody else's turn.
Well, you finally, I've been sitting here all night. Resolution 374 is to approve certified staff contracts for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Don't move.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution 375 is a resolution to accept a certified staff.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Wait a minute.
Yeah, you're totally broken up on our end.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
There we go, that's better.
All right. I was just pointing out that Ms. Miller came to us from the Newberry Local School District. So in thanking her for her years of service, there's really one year in West Giaga and multiple years in Newberry Local. So on behalf of the students of Newberry Local Schools and also of West Giaga Schools, thank you, Ms. Miller, for your years of service.
Good.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Resolution 376 is to accept the classified staff retirement of one of our bus drivers, Barb Spencer.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Thorson? Mr. Thorson?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Resolution 377 is to approve a supplemental contract for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Katsowski? Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 378 is to authorize the award of service contracts for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth? Yes. Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 379 is to approve a student for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Resolution 380 is to accept the 2020, 2021 annual report to the Board of Education on nutrition standards in the district.
Don't move.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Resolution 381 to approve the release and waiver agreements for a due process case.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? If I remember correctly, this is something that Amy in particular was very important in getting resolved. Is that correct, Rich?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you, Amy. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 382 to approve the estimate from Infinite Campus for implementation of the online registration services for the 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second. Any questions?
We'll say that this is a, right now, we use a software called OneView, which is about $5,000. This add-on is $7,500, but it will, we will no longer need the OneView. So it's an increase of about $2,500. But what this does allow us to do is do online registration. So where we've had probably 150 parents come in, we'll no longer have to do that. We do have some, they will, can come in in person, but everything can be done online now and will be fully integrated into our Infinite Campus software, which is our student, student information software.
Okay, any other comments? Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Sarah Healy, thanks you. Resolution 383 to authorize the execution and delivery of renewal agreement, the master electric energy sales agreement to the West Giaga Local School and power for schools supplier. This will be for the Newberry property.
Don't move.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Resolution 384 to endorse the Fair School Funding Plan as introduced in the Senate Companion bill to House, to substitute House Bill 305 and to encourage the 133rd General Assembly to expedite the passage of this bill.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Ms. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
I'll send those out to our representatives tomorrow.
Okay, Rich, it's your turn again.
All right. For my superintendent's report tonight, I'll be rather brief, but I want to give the board a little bit of a, of a history lesson here in terms of what we've done this year and then also a little bit of a discussion of where we're heading. As you know, the COVID-19 counts countywide are rising and they're rising not just in our county, but they're rising in Northeast Ohio, in the state and in the nation as a whole. If you recall, the beginning of the year, we embarked upon three learning models in West Giaga schools. One was a virtual model. That was one that began as an online model that was going to continue as an online model, at least throughout the first semester, and if families decided to stay with that model throughout the entire year. We also, for the first three weeks, went with a remote learning model where we put the balance of our students, the 75% who we knew were planning to return to school in person, online for the first few weeks of the school year. There were really a couple of reasons that I did that. One was because I was dreading the, the hot temperatures of late August, which were not, in honesty, quite as hot as I thought they would be. And also to give our students and our teachers an opportunity to work in a remote format in case later in the year, we would have to move from an in-person back to a remote model. And then, once we got to September 8th, we had 75% of our students return to school in person in the classrooms. And correspondingly, most of our teachers also returned to in-person onsite instruction. Very well. Very well. It has not been business as usual because we've had social distancing, we've had enhanced cleaning protocols, we've had to change many of the onsite things that we do in order to protect against the spread of COVID-19. I have to give a tip of the hat and a great deal of praise to our teachers and to our support staff who helped us to get through this time because it has not been a time without challenges. Daily now, you notice, we put out an email which gives an update on the COVID-19 count amongst our students and our staff, and we also update daily our COVID-19 dashboard, which is on the website. I think we've done a very good job of keeping our numbers low. We've certainly done a better job than, than community as a whole has done or than society as a whole has done. But we are looking at the rising numbers in the community, realizing that we're naive if we say that those numbers aren't going to increase in our schools. I'll say right now that, that our commitment is to keep our schools open and our onsite in-person learning functional as long as we can responsibly do so. That's going to be dependent upon a number of things, and sometimes people will ask me, well, what would the triggers be if we went from an onsite to a remote learning model for our students and we eliminated the onsite everyday model? Well, there'd be several factors that would enter into that. There is not one single identifiable, quantifiable figure that would mandate that switch. What we'd be looking at would be the number of active cases that we have in our schools. When you look at our absenteeism, it's not really a reflection of the number of COVID-19 cases we have. It's a reflection of illness in general. It's a reflection of vacations. It's a reflection of students who do have COVID-19 and/or staff who have COVID-19, and then those who are quarantined as a precaution so that the infection won't spread and so that the virus won't spread. Sometimes it's due to students or adults who may have had contact with someone who has COVID-19 or asymptomatic, but who have to be tested. So it would be erroneous to assume that the number of people we have absent on any given day is an indicator of the prevalence of COVID-19 in the population because in many cases, those absences are a byproduct of COVID-19, but they're precautionary measures to prevent the spread of the illness. My prediction is that if we close our schools this year, as many schools in the area are doing, that it will be a result of COVID-19 infection amongst staff and/or quarantining of staff who are unable to come to school to man our classrooms. That is what I think would be the, the most rapidly developing situation that could close our schools. If we don't have teachers, if we don't have bus drivers, if we don't have people to clean our schools, then obviously, we can't safely have our students in school. At this stage of the game, I want to stress the fact that we're not there. We're not close to there at this point in time, but those situations can change overnight. While I don't want to give the impression that we're thinking about closing school, I think that we would be naive and neglectful if we did not realize that that possibility exists, that sometime in the next weeks, months, et cetera, that there might need to be a closure of schools. If we did, the students who are on a virtual format would be unaffected because they've been virtual all year. They went into it, and their families went into it knowing they would be virtual, so that format is by definition slightly different than our other. If our in-person students had to go to online instruction, it would be a remote form of online instruction that while it would have similarities to the virtual model, would not be identical. It would be, in ways, a, a combination of what students are doing in person in terms of following a daily schedule in their classrooms and the virtual model itself. So it would be slightly different. As I say, it's not one that we're looking at going to anytime soon, but we have to prepare for the possibility that if community spread becomes more prevalent, we would need to go to that model. If we did, it wouldn't be an overnight development, and that's one of the things that people, I think, are a bit apprehensive about. Well, how would this happen? Would it be done overnight? How would we move immediately from an in-person model to a, to a remote model? What I would use as the buffer to prepare us would be some of our calamity days. We've not used them yet this year. We have a store of calamity days, and during calamity days, there is no school. The school is closed. So I was a little bit suspicious that we might have to use one this morning when I saw the wind damage in the area, et cetera, and I, I knew we didn't have a power in Westwood until 3:00 AM, but we didn't have to. So we have our store of calamity days. And my best prediction at this point in time is that if we had to move from a in-person to a remote model, we would do so by utilizing probably three of those calamity days to make sure that we have the distribution of equipment that we need to the students, that we have the teachers prepared, and that we can move rather seamlessly from that in-person to the remote model. Do I think it's going to happen? I didn't think we'd be open, in all honesty, this time of the year. If you had asked me in August, I would have thought that probably the schools would not have stayed open this long. Our parents, our kids, our staff have done a wonderful job of preventing the spread of the virus in our schools. If that work continues, I hope that we can stay open indefinitely. I'm hoping we can stay open all year long and provide in-service, in, in-person experiences for our kids onsite. If we can't, there is a plan in place to move to a remote model. We would do so, we would do so by utilizing some of those calamity days and implementing that model so that our teachers, our parents, and our students, at the time, they needed to adjust to that. Again, and I know I'm, sound like I'm beating a dead horse here, and that's not the intention, we do have no immediate plans to go to a remote model. I know that some schools are already pursuing a remote model. Some are planning on implementing one after Thanksgiving through the Christmas holidays, and at this stage of the game, we do not have any plans to do that. We are prepared for the fact that if we did have to do it, we would be able to do it. So, any questions?
Rich, but it's, it's almost a devil's advocate type of question because, you know, I'm, I'm very much in favor of protecting our staff in particular and making sure that kids don't carry COVID home. But at this point, I'm, I'm sure you're talking to experts in the field and so on. So I'm, I'm wondering, are we at community spread where it wouldn't make any difference in a sense? Because kids are, just by virtue of going to the grocery store with mom or just by virtue of being out with family, friends, they're going to be exposed to it, and having them in school or not having them in school wouldn't necessarily make a big difference. Is, is that, is that a possibility, or what, what are we looking at in terms of?
I think the argument could certainly be made. I mean, I was talking with someone today, and we said that the, the only way for someone to assure themselves that they weren't going to come in contact with the virus would be to stay in their home, and even then, one has to buy groceries, one has to buy items that come into the home, so the, the virus could be on those, on those objects. Certainly, if a person is home full-time and venturing out very, very little, I think the chances of contracting the virus would be significantly less. But I think that, Ben, you're, you're, you're really pretty accurate. I mean, I, I know that, you know, I'm, I have, have known people firsthand now who have had COVID-19, so to say that I haven't ever been around them would not be true. I try to do the things that I'm supposed to do. I'm diligent about washing my hands, but I always was sort of a fanatic and a nut about that. I try really hard not to touch my face with my hands because I know that that's a way to, to spread the germs, and I try to maintain social distancing, and I spend a lot of time outdoors. So I think those are all ways that I, for myself, try to protect, but I'm also in our classrooms quite a bit. I'm, I'm in the schools with the kids. Again, I try to maintain social distancing. I'm wearing a mask. So I think those are things that, that we can do to certainly slow the spread, and we haven't seen, if you look at our numbers, if you look at them every day, I mean, it's somewhat encouraging. Today, right now, for instance, we have seven active student cases in the schools, and we have two active staff cases. We have a cumulative total of nine student COVID cases. Now, is that to say those are the only ones we've had? Those are the only ones that are confirmed? Could there be students who are asymptomatic? Of course, there could be. There could be teachers who are asymptomatic. Any of us could be asymptomatic, I suppose. When you look at the cumulative staff infections, we've had 10. So we currently have two. We had 10, so eight of them have recovered and are back at work. So, so that's the good news for us. You know, we, we all hear about the, the ravages of the virus, and, and believe me, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not real. I, I know there are people who have terribly, terribly adverse reactions. I can just say, from our own situation here at this point in time, I'm very, very grateful that of our 10 staff members who have had it, eight of them are back at work and have recovered from it. So to say we don't have it would be naive. To say we can absolutely prevent people from getting it in our schools would be foolish because we can't. But I think we've done a very, very good job here of trying to put in place the protocols that have kept the virus from spreading as quickly in our schools as it's spread in society, and, and many of the students who have come down with this can trace it to activities and events outside of school, and the same with the staff. You know, if we have a.
That, Rich, is what I'm reading in news reports, is that there's very little transmission within schools that when students do get it, when staff get it, the preponderance of it is outside of the school environment.
That's accurate. I think that goes back to, to what I had said earlier, though, when, when we don't have the staff to fill those critical roles in our buildings to monitor our kids, because the reasons our, our kids aren't getting it in schools is because our staff is doing such a good job of monitoring the kids. And if we don't have the staff there to shepherd the kids, then obviously, you know, we don't, we don't have those protocols in place. I have yet to see a sixth grader who wants to keep a mask on all, or, no, I was going to say a six-year-old, but I could say a sixth grader as well. Sixth graders have an easier time, I think, than a six-year-old, but you just don't find a little kid who wants to keep a mask on. It takes a lot of reminding from our staff and from the people who are watching those kids to make sure that they do. So there's no, there's no foolproof way of, of preventing the spread of the virus, but what we're doing with our cleaning protocols, with our social distancing, with the masks, and with the way we've changed teaching, the way we've positioned kids, even the way recess is done outside, it's cute to watch them out there, but they're, they're spaced out. They're not running around playing tag like they used to play.
Good spaced-out kids, Rich.
Not as much fun, but they're doing a great job. And I have to say, we could not have done it without the support of the parents in this community because the parents have obviously done a great deal of prepping with their kids to get their kids to come to school. And, and I have to say, with, you know, as I look across, you go from one classroom to the other, and the kids are sweeter and better behaved in one than the next, and that, that's a credit to, to our, to our folks in, you know, in, in Chesterlin, Russell, and in Newberry because they've done a great job raising some wonderful kids that we're, we're blessed to have.
Thanks, Rich, and, you know, the whole staff, from you on down, have done an awful lot in organizing this and making it clear how we want to be running. So, you know, our thanks to you as well. I'm not going to try to name everybody because I know that there have been so many people that have had different aspects of pulling this together and making sure that all of the various parts are covered and thought of ahead of time so that we have contingency plans in, in place, we can make those smooth transitions from one mode to another that, you know, don't seem to be the case in many other districts when you see what's on the news. So thank you very much for the, the effort that all of the staff has done.
You're welcome, and it truly is. It's very much a team effort. I've been very, very pleased with how everyone's pulled together, and it's interesting. You'll watch people, and they'll cross over their comfort zone sometimes, and they'll get into an area that isn't necessarily an area where they have expertise, but they're willing to pitch in, and I was in a classroom the other day, and one of our art teachers was teaching a reading lesson, and it's just wonderful to see people jump in and, and help like that. It made me feel very good.
Okay, any other questions for Rich this time? Obviously, if there's other things that you think of later, you can give Rich a call, and he'll be glad to discuss them with you, I know. I presume that was the end of your superintendent's report, Richard. Do you have another three or four items to cover? Okay.
Unless Chet wants me to talk more. I'm not sure.
I don't know of any board reports. Somebody else has got something that they wanted to bring up at this point. If, if not, then I'm going to move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel matters as far as discipline, compensation, also purchase or sale of property and other matters required to be kept confidential by state or federal law. We are inviting into our executive session Rich, Karen, Nancy, Sean, and Glenn Quigley, Greg Proff, I'm sorry, Greg, if I mispronounced your name, Bill Skamrock, and also David Hollister. Did I get everybody, Rich?
Yes.
There will be no action taken after the executive session.
Okay.
Beverly Donlap, our fiscal officer, also Newberry Township.
Is that you, Rich, also?
I, I didn't catch the name, Bill. I don't.
Bill Sustar.
Oh.
He's our fiscal officer. He may have already bumped off, jumped off.
I'm not sure.
You didn't mention her, Bill, as, as hearing us.
Yeah, I wasn't sure that she was going to be joining us since we were.
She is not on the meeting currently either.
Anyway, so I don't, I don't see her on this.
Okay.
She was on before. She's not there now.
Okay.
I can vouch for her. I like her. So if you have anything, you want to tell her another time outside of executive session, she's a good person.
Well, we'll talk.
Okay. Jim, have you got the executive session set up to move us into, or?
I do. You just need to approve it.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
I have a, Bill, I had Dan first and Ben second.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Thorson.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth. Kathy.
Kathy, mute. Unmute.
Yes.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
All right.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Dr. Beers.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I guess you've got to call the roll, don't you? I'm sorry, Karen.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth.
Yes.
Mr. Ramey.
Yes.
Mr. Thorson. Thank you guys for the long.
Karen.